Okay, good evening.
Good evening, welcome to the April 6th meeting of Tiffin City Council. This is our committee of the whole meeting and I declare the committee of the whole meeting now open. Does anyone have any? Hear me there, Mayor?
Yes, I'm here, sorry. Brent just got on, it's working now, so he's going to, he's gonna step into the other room because it's echoing really bad.
Okay, I said it.
I wonder if he just had bad internet connection at his office or something that was causing it to not work properly, so. Okay, you said suspensions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yes, so we are requesting suspension of ordinance 2040. Those are two donations to the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division. The one is for educational materials that the Fire Department puts out every year. They, of course, are getting low on the supplies, it'd be nice that they could have this donation used right away so that they can buy those items. And then the other is to purchase medical safety equipment and a distribution system for medicine that they use for medical supplies. So, those are just two donations that they received, one was Subway and the other was Tiffin Community Foundation.
Who signed the ordinance?
I believe that was me, Councilman Foe.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Then you'll bring the suspension up?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
We also are requesting suspension on 2041. That is just, in the years past, we used to always bid out our road salt that we would get. And this year, Brandon determined he believes that we can save money by joining and buying from the state. So we buy it and bought with the state and we get a good price. So, the deadline, though, is coming up soon to where we have to tell the state if we're doing this or not. So if we wait until the next meeting, we're going to miss the deadline, so Brandon's requesting that we do that. If council's not willing to, then we can just, there's Brent, there's Brent. If council's not willing to, we could just do the typical bid that we do with our road salt. The problem is, we're not going to get most likely as good of a price, so we would prefer to suspend this so we can join with the state's program and save some road salt. We would also request ordinance 2042. That is the ordinance that's in your packets to confirm the state of emergency that we declared. Been out a few weeks ago here in the city, so that we can ensure that we're eligible for any and all funding from state, federal, and local sources. It also confirms the action that I took to waive any late fees on our sewer bills. I talked to Councilman Leopard and Council President Foe about waiving late fees. This would be on all sewer bills in the community for late fees for residential and our business customers. It's, in my opinion, the right thing to do, there's a lot of people struggling to make ends meet. They fight for unemployment, they're waiting for that unemployment checks to start coming in. So, if we're willing to confirm that action that I took, it would be greatly appreciated. Also requesting suspension of ordinance 2043. That's just another donation, that was from Tiffin Community Foundation, they donated about $7,200. And that will be utilized to reseal the walking trail of the Rock Creek Trail. Moving on to the next page, we're requesting suspension of ordinance 2044. We are due to bid out the bridge work over the Ellis Street Water Canal, the small bridge. And we need this easement passed, that is, so that we can obtain some property to do the necessary work on the bridge from the water company. No money is exchanging hands, it's just literally them giving us permission to enter and use their property when we construct the Ellis Street Bridge, the smaller of the two. We are also requesting suspension of ordinance 2049. That is, again, just a grant for body armor for the police department. It's about $6,800, you have the exact total there in your packets. And then we are also requesting suspension of ordinance 2050, which is a grant that the Tiffin Fostoria Municipal Court received from the City District Court. For the purchase of some additional remote technology items that they are going to utilize, similarly to how we are here during this pandemic. But they'll also be able to utilize it in the future, heading forward with video arrangements and other things. That is what I have, but I'm not sure, there was a couple of financials, I don't know if Kathy needed them done or Brent needed any additional. But those were the ones that I had, I knew on my end that we needed suspended.
We have ordinance 2048 and 2049, it looks like they're the same thing.
Yeah, that's a mistake, they're correct in your packet, if you look further in your packet, I'm gonna guess, and not to put you on the spot, I think you entered the same one twice on the list.
My apologies, yeah, I will correct that.
Yeah, if you look in the actual packet all the way back in there, they are correct.
Alright.
My apologies, I probably copied and pasted twice, yes. 2048, okay.
I know that was a lot, so if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any of the ordinances that have to do with finance?
I'm sorry, Kathy?
Any of the ordinances that have to do with finance could be suspended? I can't hear me.
Yeah, I heard Kathy, you said anything that has to do with finance would like to be suspended?
Yeah.
Excuse me just a minute, Mr. Schaff, I'm going to mute you, you're sending quite a bit of feedback, would you please leave it muted unless you're going to speak, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so, ordinance 2045 would be suspended. That's appropriating $1,000 to the, that's the Tiff money coming from the.
Yes.
So suspend that?
Yes.
Okay, so 2045 would be suspended? And I think, I think the mayor's asked for suspension on everything else, Kathy.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question, Mayor, do you know on? The resolution, Resolution 2025, does that need to be passed tonight?
I can answer that, Rich, we have 60 days within to, from the time that the city received it to pass it. So we can read it tonight, we can read it tomorrow, or at the next meeting, and then pass it at the next meeting. So, we do not need to suspend the three reading rule.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, there was another one I missed in here somewhere, I'm just trying to locate it. It was the one about the changing the truck routes. There it is, 2047.
47.
Yeah, if at all possible, we'd like to do that because the further notice that we can give the truck drivers that the routes are changing, the better. This is in regards to the closure of the North Monroe Crossing that will take place later this year. And, I'm trying to see what else changed here. Brent, did this also include the, the change with Second Avenue, or is that still? No, that's still.
No, it added Mall Road.
That's it.
Tiger Road.
Yes, Mall Road, Tiger Road.
Who signed that, Steve, did you sign it? Okay.
Got it.
Okay, I give.
Yeah, if not, it's just putting further behind when the truck drivers will be notified of the change of the truck route.
Yeah.
Not only that, if new posts go in, the city's gonna have to request for markings for routes. And there's a several day delay there as well.
I was looking that over myself and I was hoping Second Avenue would not be on there. A couple residents who've been to the Traffic Safety Committee, they were, it's necessary, I'm sure.
Brent?
Yes.
Is, do we have to, is there a need to announce a public hearing tonight for anything?
No, the, the, the two ordinances regarding zoning that are tabled, they can just continue to be tabled. We don't need to schedule a joint public hearing at this time. We're still working out the technology and I've been in contact with Mark Leahy's attorney on one zoning matter. And he said we could put that off till May, so no, you don't need to schedule a public hearing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Might be a dumb question, but are we gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance still, or are we still doing all that?
We're doing the, we're doing the invocation, I think we probably should stand for the, Steve, what do you think, Stan?
Yeah.
Stan, okay.
Yes.
I'm on my front porch, I have a flag out here if you guys wanna do that.
There you go.
There you go.
Alright. Maybe some awkward angles here.
Kathy's got one, she's ready. Kathy can wave hers.
There you go.
Or if I can find the button, I can put mine, where's mine again? There we go.
There you go, that's nice.
Rich? Before our next meeting, our committee of the whole, can we have maybe 10 or 15 minutes? So that the street sidewalk and sewer can discuss a request for legislation 2026. And so we can get that taken care of. It's a mayor's request for small cities program.
Well, you wanna do this again, meet at 6:30?
Yeah, that'd be fine, I, you know, this, I don't think this is gonna take us. Or maybe we could do it, could we possibly do it at the end of the program tonight, in the city council meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
They have to have a two-day notice, though?
Well, it's, it's not technically a committee meeting, it would be really part of city council meetings, so it'd be just their unfinished business. So council would be doing this action.
Okay.
Great.
Good question, Don.
President Foe? Yes, I had one thing, I don't know, this is a good time to bring it up, but John Spar, as we know, is an EMA Director. And I see that he has a weekly meeting, I think with someone in the state of Ohio. And said that each group may have one representative there, do we have a rep on that, or do we need one, or is that not an issue?
Are you talking tomorrow morning's meeting?
Correct, yes, sir.
I know myself and Dale will be on that, but I don't know if the city council has anyone that is listening to it or not. But I know the administration will be on it.
Okay.
But that's up to you all, if anyone from council wishes to join.
Yeah, well, did you all get, I got an invite to it, did all of you get one?
Well, kind of a non-invite, it said, "You're welcome, but please hold it to 100 people and only one per group," that's how I took it.
Well. I think, you know, if you got an invite, go ahead and listen to it, I'm gonna, I plan to listen to it. The way I read it, you couldn't, you're just gonna listen, there was no course.
What is tomorrow, Tuesday, I gotta check my schedule, Tuesday, Tuesday?
Alright, 7 o'clock, 7 o'clock, I declare the April, April 6th meeting of Tiffin City Council will come to order. Councilman Schaff will lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Schaff.
I would be thy name, thy kingdom come, I will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us.
Trust against us.
And lead us not to Satan, but deliver us to evil. Remind us, kingdom, the power, and the glory forever, amen.
Amen.
You guys will stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the one nation under God.
Thank you, Councilman Schaff. Clerk, Anne Forrest will call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Boil. Here. Councilwoman Boyle. Councilwoman Gillig. Councilwoman Yanatuno. Councilwoman Jones.
President.
Councilwoman Hubbard. Councilwoman Perry.
Let the record show that all seven members of the council present. Did everyone receive a copy of the minutes from March 15th?
Correct.
Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? Pardon me, no, okay. Hearing no objections, the meetings will be approved as presented. Committee reports, finance, Councilman Gillig.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Long community planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel Labor Relations Committee, Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic development and downtown planning, Councilman Schaff.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of the officers, is Honored Mayor Aaron Demonts.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll do what I can to keep this brief, I know we have a lot of ordinances and resolutions through this evening. I want to thank everyone on council for doing everything that they've been doing to help get messages out to the public. And for your continued support throughout this process. Also, a huge thank you to, to the public in general for doing their part to help flatten the curve here in Tiffin, Ohio. And doing the best we can to follow the governor's orders. Currently, with the city, myself and City Administrator Thornton are keeping up with all of our departments, especially our safety service departments. To ensure that we have an adequate supply of personal protective equipment. Right now, the Fire Department did just receive a supply that came in late last week. So they actually have a little more right now on, in stock than they typically would even have, according to the fire chief, at a normal time period right now. Now, it all depends on what is accurate as far as the computer models go. If we will run out at some point, if we do not, obviously, only God knows where at this point, the, the point of that curve will be. We're hoping that we may have enough to get through things for our first responders. So, that's been interesting, but a good job by police and fire to keep up with it. The supplies they are getting low on is just sanitizer type items, like hand sanitizer and other things. But at least as far as the personal protective equipment, they are staying on top of that and have an adequate supply right now. As you all know, things have been a little interesting on our end, trying to continue with the same level of services here at City Hall. We're doing the best we can with all of the questions that we're getting. I don't know if there's ever been a period in the nine years that I've been here that the phone has rang as often as it is now. There's, most of the time, either myself, Judy, Devin H R, Dale, are all on calls dealing with what we can. But I also want to point out how great the government and the Ohio Department of Health have been. Anytime that we have picked up the phone to call them with an issue, they have been extremely responsive. There's been times that I've mentioned things either to the governor or to his liaison, Forrest, in the city. And they've mentioned those things right there on his press conferences. They have just been so incredibly good to work with throughout this process. We really can't thank them enough because they are doing their job to save lives, to get the information that they can out to us here locally. So then we can make local decisions to ensure the safety of everyone. So, just hats off to the Governor, Dr. Acton, and those folks at Ohio for really being the ones leading the charge here in Ohio. Keeping us ahead of the rest of the states, the latest information showed today that that curve continues to get flatter and flatter, it's being stretched out even more. And they're cautiously optimistic now that we are not going to be to the point that we may need many extra beds in hospitals. If you did not watch his conference today, they talked about they identified six locations across the state. As far as where overflow capacity will be, the one for our region will be the Seagate Center in Toledo, Ohio. But they identified a total of six of these large convention centers that will be used across the state for extra hospital capacity in and with, in and when, if and when it is necessary. So, they've been wonderful, like I said, throughout this process to work with. We just today finalized things to secure a location. If any city employee tests positive for COVID-19, to where they could have free housing for a time period while they overcome their illness. If they choose that they do not want to go home, spreading it to their family, we have worked with a local entity here. To provide free housing for that city employee while they try to get over their exposure to COVID-19. We also, late last week, finally got things worked out with our insurance carrier. That 100% of the cost of any COVID-19 related medical treatment will be covered by the city. So, that way, employees such as our police officers, our firefighters, or those working in public works, or anyone for that matter. If they come down with a COVID-19 infection.
On a phone conference.
From their test to their, their treatment, and this could be, as Ted would forbid, if it's something even as significant as needing to be hospitalized for weeks on a ventilator, lifelight, etc., those expenses will be taken care of. So that employee does not have any out-of-pocket expenses for their treatment as it relates to COVID-19. We also extended that to their immediate family, knowing that if they, if the employee comes down with it, that there's still a good chance that they're going to take it home, they may give it to someone else in the household. So we're just doing what we can to try to ensure that our essential frontline employees here with the city are able to receive that treatment. And it's not an added stress or on top of what they're already experiencing for them to have to also then worry about added medical bills and this and that. So, just another thing that we're doing on top of the, the, the free housing, that we're trying to help the frontline workers here with the city with what is occurring. A couple of other items, myself, Kathy Kaufman, Dale Thornton are keeping on top of the, the stocks and bond market. If you all recall, we have notes that are due later this year for the Progress Parkway and the Fair Lane Expansion Project that we had done. Those notes are due later this year, we are working with our bond council to figure out the best time to, to reissue these notes. Because we could potentially see some pretty significant savings. We all know that the stock market is not a good place right now, but because of that, we're confident we may be able to achieve some really good rates on these notes. So we're going to explore all the possibilities, try to see when we can lock in at the best time in order to save the taxpayers' money when it comes to the notes that will end that project. And we're also looking at our other long-term bonds and debt obligations that the city has out there. And if there is a time that it makes sense for us to go ahead and move forward with some sort of a refinance on any of those, we will be sure to let council know. And definitely take any opportunity we, if we can get lower interest rates and it saves tax dollars down the road, we certainly will make those actions now. So, we, of course, all want a very healthy economy and a healthy stock market, but if we're able to take advantage of that, we need to do that locally. Because it's only going to be additional tax dollars saved down the road if we jump and refinance anything. So, throughout all of this process, I can't thank the community for being so good with everything. One of the things that we're trying to encourage right now, myself and some locals, is to have folks decorate Easter eggs and put them in their windows right now, so that the kids driving around the community can have their own Easter egg hunt this coming weekend. We know that really no one's going to be out able to do these big Easter egg hunts like a lot of the organizations have done in the past. So we thought this would be a really cool way to just, if you go on Pinterest or Google, plain Easter eggs, there's all sorts of patterns that you can print off in color with either markers, crayons, etc. Just something positive, because right now, all the news that you turn on on TV and you see is kind of doom and gloom right now. And we need to all remember, there's still a lot of positive things happening out there and a lot of good stories. So if we can share those and, and try to spread some positivity in the midst of all this angst that we're facing with right now, it'd really be a good thing. We, you know, we saw over the weekend, the folks that I gave the mayor's award to last year, Randy and Christie Wiser organized a small group that went around and decorated every tree and lamppost they could find in downtown Tiffin with a, a white, with white yarn. And it's to thank our frontline workers, our healthcare workers, first responders for everything that they're doing right now. But those are the nice little stories that really touch your heart, that members of the public are coming forward wanting to do. I had another resident ask me if they could do it to some of the trees on Frost Parkway. But we're encouraging the public to do the same, if you've got a tree in front of your house on your front lawn and you want to put a ribbon around there to thank either our beliefs, our fire, or the healthcare workers, by all means, do it. It just is another way to show those folks that are really stressed right now, and at their wits' end, working long hours. That we do appreciate what they're doing and our hats go off to them, because, let's face it, they're, they're having some of the most stressful times that they've ever dealt with in their working careers right now, with some of the things that they're dealing with in the healthcare industry and our first responders. So, we encourage the public to, to do that. But, without anything else, like I said, we're staying on top of everything. I know I've been in the office about every day for the last several weeks, even coming in a lot of weekends, Dale Thornton's been doing the same thing. He and I have kind of been rotating off, Dale's been coming in and doing a lot of evenings and whatnot. So, we're staying on top of things here at the city, the moment we get any news, whether it's from the governor, Ohio Department of Health, or whether it's something we have found out locally, we're trying to get that information out to the public. Because our belief is that if the public is informed, and it's, it's what is going to keep the most of us safe. So we just encourage everyone, continue with social distancing, we know it's not easy. I know a lot of us have not had much in the way of face-to-face conversations with anyone for the last several weeks. And we miss our friends, we miss our family. But the sooner that, that, that we get this hurt flattened out and we get on the downslope of things, the sooner we're going to be able to have things return to at least a semi-state of normalcy. It's just, right now, it's, it's very difficult times, especially with the local economy. We gave an update to our department heads and told everyone that any kind of non-essential spending is going to have to cease immediately. Any kind of overtime, etc., needs to end unless it is 100% necessary. Because we're expecting a significant drop-off in revenue as it relates to city finances this year. The state of Ohio just earlier today released their data, and they're down 10 and a half percent right now to where they should be for this year as far as their overall revenue. We finished the first quarter up 14 and a half percent here in the city. Great news, we're gonna need every bit of that cushion and then some to get through this year. We're expecting a significant drop-off, very significant drop-off in income tax revenue here in April and in May. We're aware that a lot of our largest employers that generate the most revenue, especially our factories. A lot of them have either drastically reduced the amount of employment they have, some of them have shut entirely for now. We don't want to get into speculation right now to say how far things are going to be down as far as revenue. But it's going to be a significant hit in. but it's going to be a significant hit in April and May revenues. Hopefully, we start to see some return to normalcy in June. But nonetheless, like I said, that 14 and a half percent cushion that we have for the first three months of the year, we're not confident that that's going to be able to hold up the numbers that the state of Ohio, like I said, had a massive nosedive. They're down 10 and a half percent right now with their revenues through the year. So it's pretty scary to think about, but we're being proactive in cutting out every single expense that we can. One of the items that I eliminated, I went ahead and suspended the facade enhancement program. That is likely dead for the rest of this year. We will likely at a later date be asking all of you with council just to move that facade money back into our general fund. The the last I had checked, there's somewhere around $40,000 still in there. I believe it was just under. That money's going to return to general fund so that we can use it to prop up our safety services so that we can do what we can to get through this year, knowing that there's going to be a lot of revenue issues. So with that, I I hate to paint the bleak picture, but it's something we all need to face right now. And any and all spending that can be avoided, we need to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions with the mayor?
I I just want to thank the mayor. I mean, with all of his policy, he puts out multiple per day. He just, he's really, you're mayor and you've done a great job of keeping the public informed. I know people appreciate it. As far as letting everybody know what's going on, nobody can hold a candle to you, but thanks for keeping the public in the loop.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mayor. Clerk, Council, Ian Forrest. Or Court. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial report for March of 2020. Total receipts for the month were $4,478,267.72. Total expenses for the month were $3,629,55.5. General fund unencumbered balance is $975,562.67. Income tax receipts for March 2020 were $866,804.80. So when you compare March 2020 to March 2019, we are ahead $88,051.58. 14.06%. The amount that we transferred into the public street fund was $109,527.77. The unexpendable balance for all funds is $33,47,960.45, which is the same as the bank balance for the same time period. That concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Councilwoman Gilligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept the finance director's report, bank reconciliation as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second to accept the president's report. Any discussion? All in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
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 Both, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple of items. If council members want to look at ordinance 20-44, that may look familiar to you. It is involves the Ella Street Canal Bridge. And you may recall that with ordinance 20-13, you authorize the city to receive a donation of property for the bridge, the expanded sidewalk and walking trail that will be part of the overall constructed project. As a follow-up to that ordinance, 20-13, I was in contact with Aqua along with Matt Watson. And in speaking with Aqua Ohio's attorney, they indicated that all of their property is part of a pledge for a bond that they issue, and it's extremely difficult to obtain a release of that bond to transfer even a small piece of property like what we were asking and really frankly, what they're willing to give us. So we got a little creative and decided that we could do the same thing, meaning that we could construct a portion of our bridge and in particular, the sidewalk in an area, same identical area, but through a permanent easement. So we have a permanent right to construct, use, maintain, repair, and replace a portion of the bridge, which will be the sidewalk, the side of the Ella Street Canal Bridge. And so I'm working with the Aqua Ohio's attorney to finalize the easement document instead of a deed of an actual transfer of property. But I think we get the same result ultimately. So I wanted you to be aware of, that's why you have an ordinance for, to authorize the receipt of an easement for the Ella Street Canal Bridge. It's virtually identical to the the receipt of a deed that you did earlier this year. We're just now doing it by way of an easement, a different legal instrument. I've got another item, but are there any questions regarding that ordinance? Okay, hearing none. Then also, you'll see in your packet, there are a couple of tabled ordinances, and I mentioned in the committee, the whole that the zoning ordinances involving Development Solutions and Sabana Seca, those can continue to be on the table into into May. But I wanted some clarification from council in some direction because both of those involve an annexation application that was submitted to the city within the last 45 days or so, which means that at your next council meeting, you may, if you agree, you will, you could introduce an ordinance to accept the annexation of the Development Solutions property. And to remind you, that property is an expansion of the of this spec building that was constructed, and it would allow for a greater development on that property. And you may know that there is a a business that's interested in that property right now. And that's why the owner of Development Solutions wanted to annex the property to the city, this three-plus acres, so that they would have a larger footprint to entice, attract a this built, this business to the community. So that's one annexation, and I'd like some direction from council that you agree that you would want an ordinance prepared at the next meeting because procedurally, 60 days has passed, and you could introduce an ordinance at the next meeting accepting the annexation of that three-plus acres expansion of the spec building. So that's one item that I wanted to talk to you about. Can I get some council reaction as to whether I should be directed to prepare that ordinance for the next meeting?
I I have a question, Brent. The
Yes.
The ordinance is tabled right now is a zoning ordinance?
Right, because in order to help the development of that property, we not only need to accept the annexation by ordinance, but we also need to zone that property upon application so then that they can work with the city engineer's office to get the zoning permits for the construction of the improvement. So those are two separate items, although they do involve the same piece of property.
Okay, so you're asking for, you're asking for our recommendation on providing a new ordinance to annex the the property, correct?
Yeah, to accept the annexation because procedurally, they, by state law, the annexation that was given to the clerk by the county commissioners, because they approved it, it must sit for 60 days. And then after the 60 days, at your next meeting, which is April 20th, you could introduce an ordinance accepting the annexed property.
Okay. Anyone have a comment? Steve?
I would just ask the law director to prepare that legislation.
Okay, is there a second? Dawn?
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. So I have a motion, a second to ask the law director to prepare legislation for the annexation of property. Is, are there any comments? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. It's unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got one other item that involves the same issue of annexation on the other ordinance that involves zoning. It's for the zoning of property that is at the approximately at the corner of Miami and Nelson Streets. It's a little bit down Nelson Street towards the railroad tracks. It's property owned by Sabana Seca LLC. And you have the ordinance 20-25, which is on the table regarding the zoning of that one-plus acres property. And it's designed for single-family residential district use. But the question is again, and this would be at the first meeting in May, do you want to prepare an ordinance to accept that property, accept that annexation? The city clerk, clerk of council received the annexation proceedings, the acceptance of the annexation application by the Syndicate County Commissioners in, I believe, late February. So the 60 days would run, and at the first meeting in May, you could introduce an ordinance to accept the annexation of that property. What is council's wishes?
Anyone have a comment? Raise your hand. I can hear, I can see you. We need a, we need a, we need a motion if we're going to move ahead with this. Need a motion to accept, have the, have the law director prepare legislation. Anyone want to make that motion? Councilwoman Gilligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would still move that we direct the law director to prepare the legislation for that annexation agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilman Schuff.
Like to second, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes by unanimous voice vote.
Very good. That concludes my report. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Are there any other comments for the law director? All right, we'll move on to written communications.
We have finance director's request for legislation number F20-16 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate funds into the fire department from a $5,000 donation received from Fleet Winds for the purchase of fire prevention and educational materials.
Legislation F20-16 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance director's request for legislation number F20-17 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate funds into the fire department budget for an $11,000 grant received from Tiffin Terrible Foundation for Medication, Security, and Distribution System.
Finance director's request for legislation F20-17 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance director's request for legislation number F20-18 to amend the Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate funds into the Parks Department budget for a Tiffin Terrible Foundation grant of $7,175 for resealing Rock Creek Trail Path.
Finance director's request for legislation F20-18 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance director's request for legislation number F20-19 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate additional funds into the Tiff to South Schaefer Park Drive budget.
Finance director's request for legislation F20-19 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance director's request for legislation number F20-20 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate additional funds into the Council Clerk Contractual Services budget to pay fees to the county for election expense.
Request for legislation F20-20 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance director's request for legislation number F20-21 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate funds into the Police Department budget for a reimbursement grant in the amount of $6,773.90 received in the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program.
Finance director's request for legislation F-20, F20-21 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance director's request for legislation number F20-22 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate funds into the Municipal Court budget for a grant in the amount of $14,485 received from the Ohio Supreme Court for remote technology at the Foster municipal court location.
Finance director's request for legislation F20-22 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And then I have mayor's letter of appreciation to the Tiffin Community Foundation for their grant in the amount of $7,175 to be used for the city Parks and Recreation resealing of the recreational trails.
This letter of appreciation will be held on file in the clerk's office. Thank you.
Conclusive in communications.
We're now under motions, resolutions. Are there any motions? We'll move ahead to resolutions.
Resolution number 20-15 introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution designating Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership as the City Housing Officer for the city's community reinforcement areas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 3735.66.
This is the third reading of Resolution 20-15. Councilman Perry.
I'd ask that we, for passage of Resolution 20-15.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Schuff.
Like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second to approve Resolution 20-15. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Councilman Schuff.
Yes.
Royal.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Yanaduno.
Yes.
Were you asking us something, Rich? I'm sorry, Brent's phone died, so he's back in here with me.
Did you get through everyone?
No, I did not.
Ian, I'm sorry.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have it.
Okay, Resolution 20-15 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 20-25 introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council to continue certain tax incentive agreements with local businesses and property owners and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading, Resolution 20-25. We're now under ordinances.
And this number 20-35 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent and exclusive easement to construct, maintain, repair, replace, and use a cul-de-sac for public purpose, public street purposes on South River Road.
This is the second reading, ordinance 20-35.
And this number 20-40 introduced by Ben Gilligan. Ordinance amending 2020 Budget Ordinance 1984 to appropriate donations of $5,000 from Subway Restaurants and $11,000 from the Tiffin Community Foundation for the Fire Rescue Division.
This is the first reading of ordinance. This is the first reading of ordinance 20-40. Councilman Gilli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would still move for council's suspension of our three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-40.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Me? I second, Mr. President. Couldn't hear over the truck voice.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-40. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question on the, we'll vote on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Councilman Gilli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes seven to zero. Now we'll vote. The passage.
Gilli.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-40 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-41 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT Road Salt Contracts awarded in 2020 and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-41. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for suspension of the three reading rule and passage of ordinance number 20-41.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 20-41. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the suspension.
Councilman Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes seven to zero. We'll vote on the passage.
There's an emergency, Mr. President.
Pardon me?
There's an emergency.
I didn't see that. Thank you. I will vote on the emergency.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The emergency passes seven to zero. We'll vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-41 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-42 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance declaring state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, notifying action by the mayor to waive sewer bill late charges and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-42. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for suspension of city council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance number 20-42.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Schuff.
Like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 20-42. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll vote on the emergency.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Emergency passage with a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-42 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-43 introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate donation of $7,175 from the Tiffin Community Foundation for the Parks and Recreation Department.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-43. Councilman Gilli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for council's suspension of our three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-43.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 20-43. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on, on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
This suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-43 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-44 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire easement rights from Aqua Ohio Incorporated to construct, maintain, repair, replace, and use a bridge and a sidewalk on and along the Ellis Street Canal and for incidental purposes thereto in the third ward of the city.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-44. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for suspension of the three reading rule and passage of ordinance number 20-44.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 20-44. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Aqua, Aqua Ohio for working with us on this project and creating a permanent easement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-44 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
And this number 20-45 introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2020 budget ordinance 1984 to appropriate $1,000 into the Tiff 2 South Schaefer Park Drive budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-45. Councilman Gilli.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-45.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend and pass ordinance 20-45. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of twenty, the suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
20-45 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
And this number 20-46 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept permanent easements for sanitary sewer and attendant pond purposes to serve properties at or near 2300 West Market Street.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-46.
And this number 20-47 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending Section 339.12C of Tiffin Codified Ordinances revising the list of designated truck routes in the city.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-47. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for suspension of the three reading rule and passage of ordinance number 20-47.
Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend and pass ordinance 20-47. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The leopard.
What's that?
You had your hand.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking for suspension on this, it's going to give, uh, give the truck drivers a, a longer notice of route changes within the city of Tiffin, give our Public Works Department a chance to produce or purchase necessary signage and installation of those signs.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will now vote on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-47 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-48 introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate $3,000 into the council clerk contractual services budget to pay for the 2019 municipal election expense.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-48. Councilman Gilli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Schuff.
Like to second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second. Can suspend and pass ordinance 20-48. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the, this doesn't have an emergency, does it?
Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle. Gillig. Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones. Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Chuck.
Yeah.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yes.
Gillig. Yanatuno. Jones.
Seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-49 introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate a $6,773.90 into the police department.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-49. Councilman Gilli.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Since this is a generous grant, I would ask that council suspend our three reading rule and immediately pass ordinance 20-49.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend and pass ordinance 20-49. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-49 passed with a vote of seven to zero.
And this number 20-50 introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate a $14,485 grant from the Ohio Supreme Court for remote technology for use by the municipal courts Fosteria.
ordinance 20-50. Councilman Gilli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for ordinance 20-50.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Jones.
I'd like to second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend and pass ordinance 20-50. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Chuck.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-50 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now under unfinished business. Does anyone have anything for the council? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. On March, March the 16th, Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee had a mayor's request for legislation referred to them. The request for legislation was 20-26 and reads, "I ask for your consideration for legislation authorizing the mayor to prepare and execute an application through ODOT under the Small Cities Program to reconstruct East Perry Street between approximately 200 feet east of Cirque Europe and Jefferson Streets. Approve project requirements and authorize mayor to enter into a contract for the project if the application is approved." Since, uh, committee meetings are, it's going to be hard to schedule with virus, I would ask for council's consideration that we authorize the law director prepare legislation for this request for legislation. Actually, ordinance number 19-36, which was introduced May 6th of last year, is the exact same project. We were not approved for that project last year, but I believe all the wording is there. I would ask for council's approval, uh, authorize the law director to prepare that legislation.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I would second Councilman Leopard's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a voice, voice vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. By voice, both the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ian.
One question. Who seconded that motion, please? They did. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything for the good of the order? Councilman Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure if this is the time to bring it up, but I was taking my walk about this afternoon. Lady was cutting some brushes, brush down, and she was asking for a specific reason, I guess, why the wastewater pretreatment was closed to the public. She felt that people were working more than six feet apart in their yards. The weather is good, and it'd be nice to drop that stuff off. She said she did call the wastewater pretreatment division, spoke with someone. She didn't say who, and they didn't have a real good answer of why it was closed, so I thought I would refer that to the mayor or let her, Councilman Leopard, or someone.
Councilman Leopard, do you have a comment?
Governor's stay-at-home order.
Okay, is.
Something you want to add?
Yeah, um, a number of reasons. So we left, uh, we left the site open for a few days to see how it went. Right. After the governor's order, and several problems we ran into. One, uh, when folks were dropping off brush, they were congregating, having conversations, talking to one another. Two, um, they are hunting down our employees to help them load and unload heavier items. Okay. Get our employees also to load mulch for them. And three, uh, we have a, that large construction project going on right now. People that were dropping off brush were even hunting down those construction workers who are not our employees, asking those construction workers to help load and unload items. So the construction company, I don't want to say complained, but brought it to our attention that they were not comfortable with things. So unfortunately, we made the decision that since it was not, you know, the wastewater treatment plant is an essential function, but that brush pile is not. And I even asked the law director not to put him on the spot, but asked him earlier in the day if he would give us a legal opinion. And Brent's legal opinion was also the same. He may be closer if you want to talk, just so they can hear you. Can you guys hear Brent? If you can't, let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, I looked at the, uh, the order, the state order, the stay-at-home order, and it's very clear in the definition of essential governmental function that the brush pile is not an essential governmental function. It is a service that's not required by the city charter, by state law, by city law. It's an added service that we have provided over the years. We cut it down at different times for a variety of reasons, too. So it does not qualify as an essential governmental function. Therefore, it's something that can be, um, shut down and not used. Um, and trying to comply with the stay-at-home order of the state, we should only, we should limit ourselves to what is essential to provide governmental services locally. And the brush pile is just not one of those services.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, because I might have, uh, a low tone of voice mentioned the stay-at-home order, but now I have five other items that I can get back with her, so I appreciate you. Yeah, we tried for a few days, and it was just unfortunate. We had residents walking inside the treatment plant and looking for employees to ask them to help load and unload things. And, you know, alls it takes is one resident who may have symptoms or maybe unsym, may not have the symptoms to touch that door or to go inside, and we could, we could lose our entire staff there in no time to this. So it just, I know it's bad timing because it's a beautiful time right now. I've got a stack of brush at my house about as tall as me that I would love to haul down there myself. But, uh, if we're closing it to the public, we're not allowing employees to use it either. And unfortunately, uh, we just aren't going to be able to right now. But as soon as the governor lifts the stay-at-home order, we plan to open that puppy back up and, and allow anyone and everyone to get their, their brush dropped off when they have the time to.
Very good. Anything else? Anything for the good of the order? Councilman Shaw.
Sorry, one last thing. I'm sure everybody here on this call knows this, but, um, if you have constituents or citizens or people talk to you, um, as far as the election goes, it will be here at the end of the month, on the 28th. It's 100% mail-in or absentee. Uh, polls will not be open, so it'll be a different election year for anything we've ever seen, but just people ask, spread the word, I guess.
Very good. Anyone else? I have one, um, one party, parting comment here this evening. I really like to thank Kathy Moore for helping us get through all of this. I think it went reasonably well tonight. I couldn't imagine what we would have done without her help. Uh, so Kathy, thank you very much, and NCOESC for allowing us, uh, use her services. So, um, anyone else? Mayor?
Yes, David Zach just texted me. He wanted me to remind all of you that, uh, you all are welcome, or anyone in the general public. They are hosting a webinar tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. Details are on their website and on their social media. Uh, it's with the SBA, the Small Business Administration. So any small business owner, employee, et cetera, with questions about, especially if they're closed right now and they may need a small business loan, grants, et cetera. It is a free webinar tomorrow at 2 o'clock. Details are on the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership's